Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is August 8th, 2006, and we are here for our regularly scheduled meeting, which is on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays of each week in the John Ferraro Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Council. I'm Eric Garcetti, the President of the City Council, and I am joined by my colleagues Bernard Parks, Greg Smith, and Dennis Zein. We have four members present. I'd like to ask the other council members who are not excused to make their way down to Council Chambers. We are broadcasting live on Channel 35, and I'd like to ask Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Weezer, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson to come down. Councilmember Padilla is excused today. Councilmember Labange could make his way down as well, and we have Councilmember Gruel excused to arrive late at 11:00 this morning. Pursuant to our council rules, the council members should be in their seats at the beginning of our council meeting to begin in a timely manner. We are waiting six council members, and again, want to thank those council members that are here, Councilmembers Parks, Smith, and Zein, and ask Councilmembers Cardenas, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Weiss, and Wesson to join us. As soon as we do have ten members, which constitutes two-thirds of fifteen in a quorum, we will begin the regular business. To folks that are here, we have council agendas in the back, which are available. They're also posted as we have new motions as well on the sideboards, and welcome members of the public who can come down here and testify on general public comment or on items that have been agendized for public comment. We have ten minutes of public comment, or up to ten minutes of general public comment each day, and we try to accommodate as many speakers as possible within that, and then also, we can have folks testify in Van Nuys, from the Van Nuys City Hall, where there is a remote facility, and we are able to listen to those people testifying there. We also have council ambassadors in the back who are available to answer any questions, and our CLA over to the side, if you have concerns, and can get you in contact with the right city council members. Also, just to let you know, besides being broadcast on Channel 35 and rebroadcast in the evening, these meetings are available through our city's website at lacity.org, where folks can log on and see a live web stream of these council meetings, and there's also a wealth of information about the city departments and city elected officials. We also would commend to you Councilphone, which is a phone service you can call in and listen to the proceedings, not only of the full council, but of the committees of the Los Angeles City Council, and that number is 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY. Want to thank Councilmember Weiss and Councilmember Labange who have joined us. That brings us to six members, and we are waiting four more, and again, would like to reiterate the quorum call for Councilmember Cardenas, if you will please join us. Councilmember Hahn, if you would please join us. Councilmember Weezer, if you would please join us. Councilmember Perry, please join us. Councilmember Reyes, if you would make your way down. Councilmember Rosendahl and Councilmember Wesson, if you would please make your way to City Council. Again, Councilmember Padilla is excused today on city business, and Councilmember Gruel is excused to arrive late at 11:00 a.m. As soon as we have four more members, we will begin this meeting. Thanks again to councilmembers Labange, Parks, Smith, Weiss, and Zein for being here. We are still awaiting Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Weezer, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, and Councilmember Wesson. The Sergeants-at-Arms can please inquire to their whereabouts so we can begin the meeting as soon as possible. Thank you. I've been informed that there is a committee in closed session upstairs, the Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee. That's where Councilmembers Cardenas, Perry, Reyes, and Wesson are. Thank you, Councilmember Smith, for joining us as well. That means we are awaiting Councilmember Hahn and Councilmember Weezer and Councilmember Rosendahl. If those three would join us as soon as possible, please. Councilmembers, we are still awaiting a quorum, and it is coming up on a quarter after the hour. If we don't have a quorum in about three minutes, we will adjourn this meeting. While not adjourned, we will not have the meeting today. So, again, I'd like to make one last quorum call for Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Weezer, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, and Councilmember Wesson, and if I can ask the Sergeants-at-Arms to go up to our Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee, and besides the chair, bring the other council members down, then we can have a shot at this meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Rosendahl, for joining us. Again, we have all the remaining council members in committees right now, so they are coming down. We're going to leave the chairs in the committee and bring the other council members down, and we will begin this meeting shortly. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Cardenas. I know the other members are still in the committee meetings. We are waiting two more council members, and we will begin the meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmembers Cardenas, Labange, Parks, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, and Zein. We have two committees that are wrapping up, and council members are making their way down. Normally, we would adjourn, but because it was committee business, we will await them, and Councilmember Hahn and Weezer on their way down, Councilmember Perry, Reyes, and Wesson on their way down. As soon as the first do arrive, we will begin the meeting.
Mr. President, I ask all of us to rise, please, at this time, and if you would face the flag, repeat after me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, before beginning the regular agenda, there have been, there's a request to continue item number seventeen to tomorrow, and that is August 8th, 9th.
There's no objection, colleagues. We will continue item seventeen till tomorrow.
And also, request to continue item number forty to August 16th.
If there's no objection to that, colleagues, we will continue item forty, one week to, sorry, one week and a day till the 16th. Next order?
On the regular agenda, items noted for public hearings, items one and two are street lighting, district ordinances.
Okay. What action will we take on this today?
And those would be to adopt the ordinances, and they are both to deny the protests and confirm the assessments.
Okay. We'll open and close the public hearings on items one and two. Anybody wishing to call those special? If not, let's please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Item number three is also a public hearing item. It's a hearing protest relative to the downtown San Pedro BID, and that also has an ordinance.
Okay, we do have public speaker cards, so let's call that special. Next items?
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items four through twenty-one, three. Item four, is the Commissioner, do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Please.
That would leave before council five through twenty-three, with the exception of seventeen that's already been acted on.
Okay, colleagues, any specials for five to twenty-three? Any special items? If not, let's, any special items? Okay, let's prepare the roll on those items and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you, next item. Thank you, next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items twenty-four...
Sorry, Mr. Parks?
With on nineteen and twenty-one.
Nineteen and twenty-one? If there's no objection, we'll go forthwith on those two. Yes, Ms. Han?
I want a twenty special.
We will reconsider. Hold on.
All right.
Let's go through the rest of the agenda, we'll come back. Next items, please.
Next items are items twenty-four through thirty-nine. Public hearing has been held. Twenty-four is a commissioner. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please, let's hold that on the desk.
Then that would leave twenty-five through thirty-nine.
Okay, colleagues, yes. We'll come back to reconsiderations. I'll put five on the list as well. Any specials, no problem. For twenty-five through thirty-nine, colleagues, any special items? Seeing none, any specials? Okay. Let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote. On the balance. And tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, they're on the supplemental agenda, items forty-one through forty-three.
Okay, colleagues, forty-one through forty-three. Anybody wishing to call those specials, those items special? I'm sorry, public hearing has not been held on those, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, do we have any cards on those, forty-one through forty-three?
I don't have notice of any.
Okay, forty-one and forty-two and forty-three, I've been informed, all cards, so we'll call those specials. Next items, please.
Mr. President, council, I believe, wishes to reconsider several items. I believe one was twenty...
Five and twenty.
And five and twenty.
If we can send thirty-two forthwith, if there's no objection first, we will do so. And items five and twenty, if we can please prepare the roll on reconsideration and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
And we will call those special. Five was called special by...
I believe Mr. Rosenthal.
Mr. Rosenthal, and twenty was Ms. Han?
Yes.
Okay, we will keep those on the desk. Next items?
Do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Yes, let's take a public comment now. General public comment right now, I'd like to go first to Van Nuys City Hall, and Susan Roca is our first speaker. Susan Roca, welcome. Since we do have just more than ten cards, we're going to go one minute per speaker. Again, we can't until we modify a rule that has been on our books for quite some time. Go longer than ten minutes without a change to those rules, and we can't suspend those rules. So in order to hear from as many people as possible, we'll put the timer at one minute apiece, so as few people who have made time in their day to come here will be not heard today, so, and as many as possible will be heard. Again, if you have any items that you'd like us to read, or any testimony for the council, that can be submitted here to our Sergeant-at-Arms, and we'll make sure that gets distributed to each and every council member. So, beginning in Van Nuys with Susan Roca, welcome.
I want to talk about quality of life. I want to stop, I want to change the noise ordinance, which exempts churches and schools from, from the noise law, and especially the churches that refuse to cooperate. The church in my area, they put up a new amplified sound system, which blasts their bells, organ music, and chimes, four times a day, for sometimes ten, fifteen minutes at a time. On Sunday, it's more often, and I have to hear this from my house all day long. I've already spoken to Ed Reyes, and he says he believes in freedom of expression, but he doesn't have to live with the noise going on all day long. And I really, I want the law changed so that there are some restrictions. This weekend, they put up a carnival, so across the street from us, they had yelling people from the rides. We had to hear the yelling all weekend long.
Thank you, ma'am, if I can ask you to wrap up your comment, please?
Well, what I'm asking is a change to the law, because this isn't right, it's the quality of life, and it's disturbing the peace.
Thank you.
Some churches cooperate, and this one won't.
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate your comments here today. Our next speaker is Michael Carrion.
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion, and I live in District fourteen. I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Zine for putting a motion, or gonna put a motion together, for the council people to get ahold of us after we speak here. Number two, I got something to say to Superintendent Vitor Iglesa. I think it's about time he figure, one of you guys figure out what's going on here. Is the L.A. School Board that screwed up? Is the school system that bad? Why do you guys give so many certificates out to how great the schools are doing? Everyone here is giving a certificate out to how great the L.A. Unified School District is doing, and what accomplishments they made, and what certificates they've won and awards, yet Superintendent Vitor Iglesa says they're doing so terrible. Again, if you guys don't get here on time, we have to sit here all day. We get punished. If we are not here on time, we don't get to speak. Please, show up on time.
Thank you. And just a point of information today, I know we had all the councilmembers in the building, they were in committee meetings today, so we'll make sure that is done in the future. Giving precedent to folks who haven't spoken yet this month, we have Gary Watts as our next speaker. Is Gary Watts here?
Good morning. My name is Gary Watts. I'm a Studio City resident, and the issue I'd like to bring forward is a housing issue, the loss of affordable housing and condo conversions, as well as demos. I understand today that Rosenthal had passed a motion to include the condo conversions as well as demos. I urge all you councilmembers to support such an issue. And Mr. Padilla, I'd ask you to amend your ICO in CD seven to include demolitions as well, because this is our community that's being destroyed, and I really believe that the best interest we could do as a committee, or this body itself, is to include the demolitions as well as conversions, because this is an epidemic, and we do need to address this issue in a timely fashion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate your public comments today. Mary Lane is next.
Good day. I come here representing the children and the seniors from Boyle Heights. Boyle Heights is the heart of the city of Los Angeles. Everyone talk about Boyle Heights being bad. Yes, the children and the seniors of Boyle Heights need the attention of you people. We have a feria, a carnaval coming, the eighteenth, the nineteenth, and the twentieth, and it's nine days, and we don't have the permission yet. I want to know why. We talk about Boyle Heights being a lot of crime, a lot of stuff. The people that live over there need attention too. So I came today to begging the name to the children and the seniors, please give us the permit. We got nine days so we can have the sixth annual feria in Boyle Heights. I, please, please, give us the permission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if you'd like to submit anything, again, we have the chief legislative analyst over there, you could submit to the sergeant any paperwork you have. Juan Jimenez is our next speaker.
Somebody left a dollar here. Anyway, good morning, honorable chairpersons and councilmembers. My name is Juan Jimenez, I'm with Operation Yes. I have something here to give to the chairperson of the council, and also to Councilman Wezar. These two documents given to you are petitions signed by the neighborhood, and also by residents of the area that we're holding our festival in. And also gives a date that it was received by Wezar's office. We are in dire need of having our permit approved. We've been waiting and waiting, and to this date, we haven't had our street permit approved yet. And we have a lot of people at stake waiting, and the committee, in fact, is asking, are we going to have it, or what's going on? Because we're supposed to have it in July, but we didn't have it in July, due to lack of planning and stuff. So we're hoping that this, this body would support the event and pass it, so we could go ahead and have one just as fruitful as Jan Perry had her successful on Forty-second and Central, I believe it was.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And that was really good.
I'll be happy to have the guard collect that. Thank you very much. Linda Pierre Avila is our next speaker.
Good morning, Linda Pierre Avila. I don't think any other democracy in the world would have done to the South Central farmers what the city of L.A. allowed to be done to them. It makes me wonder if the city of L.A. is really democratic. This is what I've experienced. The city of L.A. has hypocritically violated its own open space element plan by allowing to be destroyed the community-oriented open space that was the South Central Farm for the sake of a warehouse. City officials and judges gave preferential and deferential treatment to a wealthy businessman to the detriment of three hundred and fifty impoverished families. Despite support from people like Maxine Waters and Barbara Boxer, law enforcement came in several times, like the military at war, so the developer could come in. Your own deputy mayor, Larry Frank, has publicly stated that, quote, "Developers run this city," unquote. From the American, from my old beat-up American Heritage Dictionary, here's the definition: "A system of government that merges state and business leadership." That is the definition of fascism, and I humbly ask you to consider that in the case of the South Central farmers, the city of L.A. has acted more like a fascist government than like a democratic government that is befitting the city. Thank you.
Our next speaker is in Van Nuys. If we can go to Sharon Brewer, please. Sharon Brewer?
Hi, my name is Sharon Brewer, and I'm here to ask the Education and Neighborhoods Committee to immediately look into the decision by the Human Relations Commission, the final decision-maker, regarding two challenges to the Encino Neighborhood Council election on June eighth, oh six. The final decision-maker's conclusion denied challenges and certify election. I sent a letter listing eight challenges regarding this election. Five of the challenges are directly connected and printed in the ENC two thousand and six election procedures. I also listed four possible violations of the ENC election procedures, one twenty-six oh five. These were not even addressed by the FDM. It seems to me that the Human Relations Commission ignored specific information printed in the ENC two thousand and six election procedures, and also made excuses why violating the timeline is okay. Also, my first challenge has not been addressed. Again, I request the Education and Neighborhood Committee immediately review this decision by the Human Relations Committee. I did try to bring this information to the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners on Tuesday, August first, at eleven P.M. during an agendized item, and there was no response from the commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brewer, we appreciate your comments. Zuma Dog is our next speaker.
Yes, my name's Zuma Dog. You've heard me say I'm running for L.A. City Council, because there's so much rampant corruption and civil violations, and you're running amok of state and federal law to satisfy your own needs, L.A. City Council. So I was just at the city clerk's office, and ye-yi, here's what the paperwork looks like if you want to run for city council. I'd like to say also, I just found out, you could be homeless. You're allowed to be homeless and run for L.A. City Council, I'll be the first homeless person, because all you have to say is, "I live on the street corner of Coldwater Canyon and Victory," and that'd be a perfect district, because that's Wendy Groos, and she's the most corrupt anyway. Here's the map of that red chair, y'all, and here's all the information. And I'd like to say, I hope you pass that Clean Money Act, because, you know, I know somebody's going to come out and donate ten million dollars to Occidental College to have Ted Mitchell run against me, and that's a public outcry. And so I hope you pass the Clean Money so I can get that, because I'm not going to be able to fight all y'all contributions. And I'd also like to say, go to my website, there's a lot of concern about the mayor's issue of L.A. USD. I explain why it's wrong for the city. Also, check the daily news, just do a Google search for Zuma Dog, and you'll see all the problems out there. Zuma Dog, homeless councilman for city council.
Thank you. Michael Hunt is our next speaker.
Well, 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 good morning. Man, I was the first card at nine twenty-five, and I'm the last person. Gosh, I guess that's very democratic, being the first card in and the last, last one speaking. Mr. Zine, let me take my hat off to you, for one, correct the problem while we here. The reason why we here is that our First Amendment have been violated, and we say that to you a number of times, and yet nobody has done anything or corrected the situation. I feel that that's abuse from city council. I think that you guys need to get off you guys' butt and start helping the, your constituents, so that they can go back to work and do a lot of good things. Bill, I seen you do affordable housing, or ask for affordable housing in your area. I think that anybody that bills in your district should be sectioned to three different sections: low income, seniors, and profit, before they develop any property in your community. Eric?
Thank you very much, Mr. Hunt.
Eric, we got to get a better hold on the meeting. I was the first one, my card was in first.
I was giving precedent to some folks who are not here, who have not spoken this month, but we appreciate it, I'm glad you were able to speak today. Don Garza is our final speaker for today. And I'd like to read into the record the folks we were unable to get to today. Again, we are allowed, only allowed by our own council rules, which cannot be suspended, and which we did not make, but we are looking at ten minutes maximum of public speaking.
Good morning, City Council, the city of Los Angeles!
Hold on, two seconds, Don. I want to read the other names we didn't get to. Richard Robinson, Sylvia Hawkins, Bruce Darian, and Samuel Sanchez. Go ahead, the floor is yours, Mr. Garza.
Good morning, City Council and the city of Los Angeles. Many years ago, under the tutelage of Mayor Han, I love you, Antonio, but I got to say, Mayor Han, the neighborhood councils were created with the many people of this great city of Los Angeles. Everybody worked hard. This month, well, this year, on September the twelfth, the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council will be holding its third election. You have, until this Saturday, actually this Friday, to file as a candidate in the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council boundaries. You can go to www.dlang.com, D-L-A-N-C dot com, to get that information as PDF, print it up, sign it. Also, you can go to www.centralcitye.blogspot.com to read more about Downtown Los Angeles. God bless this city council and Zuma Dog.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garza. That closes our general public comment for today. If we can go to the first item before us.
Mr. President, do you wish to take up the commissioners at this time?
Sure, why don't we take the commissioners?
First one is item number four, and that's confirmation of Ms. Finoa Fernandez Diaz to the Rent Adjustment Commission.
I'd like to recognize the Chair of our Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee, Mr. Wesson, and invite our Commissioner nominee forward to the table, if you'd like to come forward. Ms. Diaz? If you'd like to come forward to the table. Thank you. And I recognize Mr. Wesson to say a few words.
Good morning. We had the opportunity to have a discussion, I think it was last week, last Tuesday, and the committee voted unanimously to recommend to the full council that we support this, this appointment, and I would like to afford you the opportunity to tell the council a little bit about yourself and a little bit about your plans, when I hope is a unanimous, after a unanimous council vote, to put you on the, this committee. Ms. Diaz, so with the permission of the El Presidente of the council, I would afford you the opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Fiona Fernandez Diaz. Again, I welcome this opportunity to contribute my skills and experience in urban planning to this great city of Los Angeles, and, and I would like to continue to advance the sustainable development equity and advance the quality of life for the city, and my, I welcome this opportunity to be able to do that.
Thank you very much, and thank you for putting yourself forward for service. Mr. Rosenthal?
Would you describe the Rent Adjustment Commission, what that is, what you see your role there doing?
I believe my role in being a commissioner with the Rent Adjustment Commission is to preserve the existing housing stock for equity, for, to promote the ordinance that was passed that, that protected the people who were, would, are in income levels that would not necessarily be able to compete with the current levels of rent now. That is, that is what I feel the, the task is for this commission.
It's quite a challenge, isn't it?
It is, especially with the current housing market and the crisis that we are experiencing with the city.
You know, fifty percent of my constituents are renters, and all of them are now under the assault of condo conversions. I'm putting a motion in today on condo conversion moratorium. What's your sense about that, condo conversions?
Well, I believe that in the condo conversions, again, that is going, moving towards the diminishing of that existing housing stock, and what would happen to the individual... of that existing housing stock, and what would happen to the individuals who are not going to be able to have any places to live once those, those buildings are converted. And, and at the same time, I believe that the market has to be, through policy, must be maintained as well. So it's, it's a, it's a very delicate balance, I believe, to maintain marketability, but at the same time preserve opportunities for people.
Indeed, and you said it so eloquently. That's why we're putting a motion in. We don't want to lose our middle class in our district. Now, I want to thank you, Mr. President, for your comments about her, and congratulations for stepping up to the plate.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Nobody else wishes to be heard. We can please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you.
All right. We send that forthwith, please, if there's no objection. And I'd like to recognize Mr. Cardenas for a quick introduction.
Thank you very much, Council President Garcetti. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome someone who's sitting here in the chambers, Christina Wessel, who I met when she was an Assembly Fellow in our Sacramento State Capitol, and she was a bright young lady back then, and now she's a very well-educated, bright young woman. She just finished the Kennedy School of Government at Harvard University. She got her master's in public policy, and she's not here looking for a job, ladies and gentlemen, or else I would have hired her already, so no need to go offer her a job. She's very talented, very qualified. She's going to be now working for the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation in Seattle, Washington. So she's going to be doing some fine work there, bringing her perspective and her expertise and her professionalism to that job, and I just wanted to welcome you, Christina, to our chambers, and congratulations on your education and also your accomplishments and your future endeavors over at the Gates Foundation. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. I think you've achieved your end of embarrassing her, so congratulations on that. Our next, our next item, please.
Item number 24, and that's confirmation of Ms. Glenda Martinez to the West L.A. Area Planning Commission.
We can ask our next nominee to please come forward. We do have a public speaker card on this, so I'd like to take that first since public hearing has not been held on this. Sylvia Hawkins, if you'd like to come forward to give comments on this nominee, please. Item 24.
Good morning, everyone. Again, my name is Ms. Sylvia Hawkins. This is addressed to the Los Angeles Area Planning Commission, a young woman who's being hired. We must be aware that the real President Bush is dead, and now they are faking.
If you could please, if you could address the.
The Iraq, the Iran, the Lebanon, Gaza, Fujair War in the Northern California area.
Mr. City Attorney.
With changing the scenery and the streets.
Excuse me, Mr. President. The council could find that she is, her remarks are impertinent and not germane to this issue, and she could be declared out of order.
It looks as though it is another country.
If I can warn you, we just need to have you address item 24, which is specifically the nomination of this woman, so if you can, if you can keep it to that. No, we're not talking about street lighting, ma'am. We're talking very specifically about the nomination right now for one of our area planning commissions of Glenda Martinez. So you need to address the nomination of Glenda Martinez, please. Don't worry, we'll continue it. Please, go ahead.
It's planning. Planning is dealing with street lighting and, 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 and all kind of, the dirt, correct?
Please, continue.
Well, I'm trying to show you the scenery and the street lighting. They are faking the war. It is looking as though it is in another country, but it's located in Northern California, Los Angeles area, and not in other 49 states, it's in California. All church of God in Christ will not win these wars for the next year and a half in California. Charles Blake is dressed up as President Bush, whom is also, whom also killed President Bush, and all sports, coast, media, and principals of schools and all police departments. We must be aware of these things that's happening.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to recognize our Chair of the Planning, Land Use and Management Committee, Mr. Ed Reyes, followed by Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank Ms. Martinez for stepping up. She did attend the Planning and Land Use Management Committee. Unfortunately, it was a committee of one.
I'm sorry, Mr. Reyes. Can I interrupt you for one second? If I could ask everybody's attention, please, to keep your conversations to a minimum. Shhh. Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you for asking everyone to be courteous, Council President, in lowering their conversation levels. I do want to thank Ms. Martinez for stepping up. She did attend our committee. Unfortunately, it was a committee of one, but I would like to ask her how she would see her role in the Area Planning Commission. Can you move the microphone towards you, please?
Good morning. My name is Glenda Martinez, and I see my role in the West L.A. Planning Commission, one where I will enforce the municipal code and bring to the committee my experience as a lawyer, as well as my, my background and my experience as a resident of the city of Los Angeles.
Just for the sake of understanding your point of view, in terms of housing and the crunch that everyone is feeling because of the high cost, what is your perspective on how we are able to propose greater access for housing? Any thoughts on that particular subject?
Yes, I, I think, as I was, it was addressed earlier, one of the big issues in the West side is the condo conversions from rental housing, and I think it's very important to balance development with affordable housing for middle-income and lower-income people. And so I think that's one of the areas that we really need to focus on because there is definitely a need for housing in our area.
I'd like to encourage an eye vote for a person who's a lifelong resident of Los Angeles, who is well-prepared and disciplined in terms of the law, and I just want to thank her for providing this service for our city and hopefully continue working together between your Area Planning Commission and our Plumb Committee. Thank you very much, and encourage an eye vote.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
The West L.A. Planning Commission handles the 5th District and the 11th District. Are you familiar with the issues we have on the West side?
Yes, I am.
Explain them.
I, I know that, that one of the big issues is the condo conversion, as you had mentioned before. I think another issue is affordable housing overall. I think the prices in the area are just astronomical, and it's becoming a big issue for middle-income families being able to afford housing in that area.
And, and on this commission, how do you see you interacting with developers who I want to encourage to build more housing in my district, but I want them to build affordable housing as well because part of my gridlock are people coming in to work, but they can't find a place to live? How do we incent developers, from your point of view, to build more affordable housing?
I, I think it has to be a give and take, where they can earn and make money in these developments because that's what they're there for, but at the same time, there has to be some limitations and some incentives for providing low-income housing.
Yeah, and, you know, with transportation corridors and commercial corridors, density makes sense if it includes a package of all kinds of housing. Do you feel that way? So affordable would be part of it, market price would be part of it, but an opportunity for all people to live.
Absolutely. I agree with that. I think that it's, it's, that it's important to, to have not only expensive housing, but a mixed type of housing as well, and, and I think that that should be part of requirements for development. And, and then I think another issue that is a big issue in the West side is, is the, the traffic and the environmental impact that these developments are having on the community, and I think that's also that, something that really needs to be looked at.
I appreciate you saying that, and we look forward to your leadership on the commission. Thank you so much for stepping forward and doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is President's item number three, and that was called special for cards from the public.
Okay, we have Alan Johnson first on item three, to be followed by Elizabeth Schindler, and then Sylvia Hawkins. Mr. Johnson, two minutes, please.
Thank you for hearing this today, and I appreciate the work of our Councilwoman Hahn on putting this property owner's bid together. We had another bid before that had some success, and I think this is the next step. It's worked well in other cities like Long Beach, New York, other, other great cities, so I would just encourage the council to support this Business Improvement District and hope that we have, that we were able to experience the same things that it's done, brought to other places. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Elizabeth Schindler is our next speaker.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Schindler Johnson, and I'm also here to support the San Pedro Business Improvement District being renewed this year, and I wanted to thank Councilwoman Hahn for all her hard work for our district, and, and thanks for, thanks for keeping up the good work. Glad we have no protests today.
Thank you. Sylvia Hawkins, our next speaker on this.
Okay, good morning, everyone. My name is Ms. Sylvia Hawkins. Again, concerning number three, we must again be aware of the planning that is going on with the war that is going on. We must continue to stop faking that the war is overseas when it is in USA in Northern California and in Los Angeles.
Mr. City Attorney.
Again, we must be aware of media directors.
Mr. President, this could be declared out of order for impertinent remarks that are not germane to this issue.
I'm sorry, Ms. Hawkins. The item, can I read it to you? We'll pause your time. It's to hear protests regarding levying the downtown San Pedro Business Improvement District. Okay? So it's about the San Pedro Business Improvement District, if you can talk about that. Okay, we'll start your time again. Please, continue.
Okay. As we begin to demolish, we must be aware in the San Pedro downtown area, which the war can be here because a lot of things about to be demolished before it is built back up. Therefore, we are dealing with media, newspapers. If they demolish the Los Angeles time, how will we get our newspaper? If they close down the city hall, if we are bombed by Italy, how will we know about the city hall of Los Angeles and what to do and what to go, where to go?
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins.
How will we know about the television direct?
Thank you for your comments today. We are now going to take up this item on San Pedro Business Improvement District. I'm sorry, that's, that's the time we have today. Ms. Hahn is our next speaker. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I know I'm going to get unanimous support on this item. This is to, this was our last step before we approve the downtown San Pedro Business Improvement District. It's been a merchant-based improvement district. We want to move to a property-based assessment district. We're hiring a new consultant, Don Duckworth, which I think will get the San Pedro bid in that direction. It'll be better for San Pedro because a merchant-based bid is levied every five years, so it gives an opportunity for long-range planning, and we think with everything that is happening in downtown San Pedro, most recently, we imploded a building Sunday morning, which was really a dramatic symbol of how we're kind of moving away from the old and we're bringing in new, exciting living environments for downtown. We're redeveloping our waterfront, and people like Alan and Liz Johnson really are great downtown business people who really cared about downtown and also see the vision that I have, which is really making it a downtown livable, sustainable community, and this bid will provide for landscaping and cleaning and maintenance and really moving our downtown San Pedro into the next, really, the next level, which is very exciting. It's definitely the new hot property in all of Los Angeles, so I hope I will get your unanimous support this morning. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you. I know how hard you've worked on that, Ms. Hahn, so congratulations on today. Let's open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And that is approved unanimously. Next item, please. Forthwith, without any objection.
Next item is item number five, and that was called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl, we have number five before us.
First, I'd just like to use it as an opportunity for Brian Darcy to speak, and I'll reserve my comments for afterwards, if that's okay, Mr. President.
If you'd like to reopen the public hearing on this?
Yes.
Mr. Darcy, okay. If there's no objection, we will do so, and I want to set the timer to two minutes. Welcome, Mr. Darcy.
Good morning, council members. My name is Brian Darcy. I'm the business manager of IBEW Local 18, which represents 7,800 water and power workers. I rise to oppose the amendment of an ordinance which, on its face, is designed to simply undermine our collective bargaining agreement and to undermine the city charter, which says very clearly that you cannot contract out work without it being more feasible or more economical, and our MOU provides a process in which expedited arbitration would make that determination. This is an unbridled coup d'etat by the general manager to put under his auspices $10 million worth of contracting, broken out into tiny little contracts that I suspect they'll have to go to Home Depot in order to man. This is outrageous, and this council should return it forthwith back to DWP to do the right thing. It requires no commission overview. He simply turns this over to the, they turn this over to the general manager, and it is wrong. We are prepared to do this work. We've had a intermittent worker dispatch under our auspices at Water and Power for 30 years. We can do this intermittently, or we can do it with annual-rated employees. This is an outrage. Please vote no.
Thank you. We also have a card from Samuel Sanchez. Mr. Sanchez here? Okay. If not, Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, what I'd like, Mr. President, is if it works with the Chair, send this back to committee where they can have an opportunity to discuss it further and give Mr. Darcy and others an opportunity within the committee to, to express their opinions on it, if that makes sense.
Okay. We have Mr. Parks and Mr. Zion also on the speaker queue. Mr. Parks?
Thank you. Could I ask DWP staff to come up, please? Are you okay?
Don't wear slippery clothing. That's the message here.
Are you okay?
Yes, I'm fine. My name's Madeline Rackley. I was just trying to get your attention, which I think I've successfully done.
You were very successful.
Now that I have your wrapped and undivided attention, I'm with the City Administrative Office, and this item before you, there may be a little bit of confusion about what this item does. This, the Department of Water and Power currently has authority to award a contract for design-build services for security system upgrades at their facilities. This is an ordinance to, this, this item before you will rescind the ordinance that allows them to award to one vendor and allows the DWP to award a contract to multiple vendors, and that is the item that we're discussing today, is rescinding an ordinance and replacing it with another ordinance. Robert Nakamoto is here from the DWP, and I think he can answer some of your detailed questions.
Let me just ask, additionally, the ordinance was to go out for one RFP.
Correct.
For the entire $28 million?
Yes, the original ordinance was to allow us to award to one single vendor.
One single, but outside of the city employees? It was going to go out RFP?
That's correct.
Okay, and so it was not a situation where city employees were going to compete for that RFP?
Oh.
Or could they?
The original ordinance was to add, was, was for design-build services to supplement the city forces.
To supplement?
Yes.
Okay, now, what's the change in the ordinance that we're now asking?
To allow us to be able to award to multiple vendors as opposed to just one single vendor for the purpose of increasing competition in our contracts.
And, and what was the breakdown initially as for city employees versus the RFP? In dollars?
The original ordinance called for $8 million to be contracted out and approximately $18 million to be done with internal forces.
Okay, so the new ordinance gives us the flexibility for competition for the $8 million, does not alter the $18 million for city services?
We have updated our estimate to now be $10 million for contracting out. That does not alter the $18 million to be. That does not alter the $18 million to be done by city forces.
And the increase from eight to 10 was caused by what?
We just updated our estimate for, which was done approximately a year ago.
Okay, the competition, you believe, will do what as far as to benefit the city?
By having multiple vendors, over this two-year term of the contract, we believe that having these vendors bid on the 112 sites that we propose to install security upgrades will maintain competition throughout this two-year period as opposed to having just one vendor doing these upgrades over that time period.
Okay, and then how do we ensure compatibility if several vendors are building parts of the security system?
In our RFP, we will have, we list design standards and criteria so that it will be consistent with the work that we're doing with our in-house forces.
To both the hardware and software will be compatible?
That's correct.
Okay, and then on the issue today, we're not just approving the 10 million for the RFP, we're actually approving, what, a $28 million project?
For today, the ordinance is only to allow the bidding of, allow the award to multiple vendors for the $10 million.
For the $10 million. So the other part has already been approved by prior act?
Yeah, it's been approved by our board and in our budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zine's our next speaker.
Thank you. Good morning. That was quite a stunt. The X Games just ended. You would have got a gold medal.
You need Velcro on the chair.
Velcro on the chair. The issue that was brought up by Mr. Darcy, my concern is that we always use city crews, city staff, to do projects, and I know that we have 48,000 city employees. That includes Water and Power employees, Police Department, and all the other departments. Why would we expand the list versus using our in-house city personnel to do these projects?
The department is currently using in-house forces, design engineering and field forces to install security upgrades, access control, video cameras, network infrastructure at our facilities.
Now, this is done by city employees?
Yes, it is.
City employees that we've got background checks, city employees that we know are loyal to the city of Los Angeles?
That's correct. Trained in, working in hazardous facilities.
Okay.
In order to expedite the installation of these security upgrades, this design-build contract is proposed to add additional resources, which will allow us to accelerate the schedule and get this important work done sooner.
Now, add additional resources, you mean additional personnel that are not city employees?
That's correct.
Now, these are for security functions?
This probably for designing and installing the security, electronic security devices.
Now, what type of background check is done by the people in the private sector that are doing these under contract?
We would conduct a security background check, primarily Homeland Security. Prior to the issuance of this request for proposals, any vendor who was seeking to get the proposals, we required them to submit their engineering license and their contractor's license.
No, I'm talking about the identity of the individuals performing the function.
Okay.
The identity of the person. We know that the city employees, we've done background checks on them. We know who they are, they're loyal to the city of Los Angeles. The concern I have when you're talking about security issues?
Yes.
We bring in the private sector, and we don't do a background check on private sector, security, or individuals that come in and do contract work for the city of Los Angeles. We had this problem at LAX where they had security people that had felony convictions. When they started doing some checks, they found out they shouldn't be there doing security. My concern is, what do we do to protect the city, and we're talking about security and the security systems, on the individuals that are contracted from the private world?
Okay.
They may be good people, but the fact is, we don't have that same kind of ability to check them, to do checks that we do with our city employee, our city workforce.
For each individual contractor and their subcontractors, we will conduct a background check with our
Do we do that routinely? Have we already done that? Is that something that we've done, or are we going to start doing that?
It is routinely done now.
Pardon me?
It is routinely done now for contractors that are going to work in our critical facilities.
So we do a background check as we do with the, through the Police Department, through Cal, Department of Justice? What type of check do we do? Because we're talking Homeland Security, we're talking about security, we're talking about maintaining the integrity of that, and the concern I have, it's not like, you're talking the security of the facilities.
Absolutely.
Of concern. We know that our police officers go through background checks, and every city employee goes through background checks. Concern I have, when we contract with a private vendor, we don't know what they're bringing on to do security installation, or security review, or security upgrade. I mean, they could be good people, and then again, we don't know. So I'd like to know what kind of check we're doing on those individuals. I support Mr. Rosendahl's motion that we send this back to committee to have it reviewed, because I think there's a lot of unanswered questions and a lot of money involved, and we do the right thing and not just accept it without having the proper safeguards.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Did you respond to that? Other than that, send it back to the committee, the other part that you can respond to?
Sure. We plan to conduct that security background check. I was told by our Security Services Division that it would be using the Homeland Security database, and we would be checking individual contractors and their employees for any issues that we may find.
What issues are we looking for?
If I can ask you to press your button, Mr. Zine?
See, that's why I think these go back to committee, Mr. President. I would support, Bill, in your motion to send us back to committee, because there's a lot of unanswered questions, and I don't want to retake the time here to go through them also.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
I think if there was a motion, I'm seconding that motion. If not, I'll make the motion that we send it to committee.
Seconded now by Mr. Zine. Ms. Perry, and then Mr. Lavange.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I also, Bill and I talked about sending it back to my committee. I think it would be too time-consuming to be able to vet this on the council floor, but what I want to say on the record is, all stakeholders on this issue absolutely must be present when it goes back to committee so that this can be fully vetted with all interested parties involved and giving their input.
Mr. Lavange?
Can I just ask the city administrator officer to give us some focus? And a main question is represented was, is this a violation of the charter? Before we answer the question, I want to say loudly that I appreciate all the hard work, all the thousands of men and women of the Department of Water Power did in our time of need three weeks ago.
With respect to the charter questions, my understanding that 10/22 review has been completed. If you look at, well, I'm going to somewhat repeat what Matty stated, that you have an existing contract in place that allows for a single vendor
Ordinance.
Ordinance, I'm sorry, ordinance, that allows for a single vendor to handle this work versus the new one would allow for multiple vendors to provide this work. It appears, though, that there's several councilmembers who have asked that this would go back to committee so it can be fully vetted and so that everyone involved would have a chance to, you know, state their concerns. Contracting out is a very, very sensitive subject, because it does need to meet the threshold required in the charter of being, you know, feasible and economic. What you have now, as I understand, a desire to get this work done as quickly as possible because of security means, of security issues. I would, I'd imagine if an argument can be made that requirement, the requirement of expediency, if that can be done, you know, just as quickly with city staff as it could with outside staff, then that would be persuasive.
Just a question, I know we've had discussions to ask, because I'm very concerned that there's not enough people working in the field in Water and Power, not enough people working on the power side in Water and Power. We had this discussions during our crisis several weeks ago, and members, I'd rather see the department focus on getting people to do that work, and if we need to call on someone for support for this, this is internal work, correctly? This is not going to the people of Los Angeles. It's internal to the Department of Water and Power. Right now, in the mornings, there's a private security guard who drives around Silver Lake Reservoir. This is an extension of that, basically, that type of security. I'm asking the staff there.
The services that we're looking for is not guard services or officer services, but services to install, design, video cameras, access control devices.
And do we have that under contract right now?
No.
Don't have it under contract right now. But, Mr. Fujioka, do you understand my point? I think the people of Los Angeles would rather see us have people who are working improving the transformers of this city more than anything else. That's their goal, to see that they make sure they have power. This is internal. How are we going to balance that out as the city administrative officer? Is there enough people for Water and Power to do the transformer workers? That's what I really think the citizens of Los Angeles, the constituents of the Fourth District and other districts want, and if the department needs to call on an outside support for this, you know, I need some help from you.
Absolutely.
So what do you suggest? Do you think this needs to be vetted more?
That's something that, on that particular question, I would need time to talk to our general manager at Water and Power
And also
And see what's necessary. And so the key is whether or not, I'm sorry, whether or not the internal staff, augmented by, I understand, is an as-needed pool, an intermittent staff, can do it in-house versus having the multiple vendors come in. My bottom line would be, given the criticality of this issue, and we're talking about securing our water and our power systems, but mainly our water systems, that we go forward with what achieves that goal.
Let me just ask the staff then. What improvement would make, because I know at one of the receiving stations in Los Angeles recently had someone who was an intruder. Do you remember that in the last week or 10 days? The receiving station on Central Avenue had an intruder in the middle of the night. Would this security go towards receiving stations and distribution stations?
Absolutely.
Okay. Members, and I hope, do we do background checks? As Mr. Zine brings up the point, I see in the paper there was a employee of a park system who was under arrest from previous work there. Is everyone, whether it's a contractor or city regular, has to do a background check, Mr. Fujioka?
Backgrounds for a contractor? I know for city staff, absolutely. I'm asking the department.
For this proposal, we would do background checks, security background checks on the contractors, employees.
Given they're working on securing their facilities, I would think that would be a very basic requirement.
Right, well, just last week, someone intruded at a big receiving station. I just, Madam Clerk, did the chair of the committee, forgive me, ask that it be continued a week or sent back to a committee for a week?
Do we have another speaker on the queue if you can make this last question?
They did. I think that we should vet it a little bit more, but members, I'd say the most important thing that we should hear from the CAO and the management of Water Powers, how many people they need to deal with older transformers, older systems of infrastructure to upgrade Los Angeles. And I say this in all respect, if they need people to do interior, in-house jobs, let them call on that, but let's get the people in the field who were hurt so painfully in the heat wave
Thank you, Mr. Lavange.
Some weeks ago.
Thank you.
On that note, excuse me, sir, during that time, we can also ask Labor if they could, you know, demonstrate if there are sufficient resources, I'll call them city resources, to address this. That could also be part of our report back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks and Mr. Zine.
We'll talk to both.
Zine and Mr. Parks.
I just wanted to get a clarity, how quickly can we get this back to council? Is it
Well, it depends. If we're going to committee, if we go to committee, then we'd have to bring it, conceivably, we bring it back next week.
Okay.
Depending on how quickly it can be scheduled in committee.
Yeah. Ms. Perry, I was just wondering, how quickly? Can we get this scheduled and back?
Sixteenth, and then placeholder on the council agenda so we can do it before we go into adjournment, but again, I have to really emphasize that all interested stakeholders really, absolutely need to show up for the meeting, okay? That's the reason I'm doing this. And the reason I suggested we do this is to make sure that we create a wide-open opportunity for anyone who is involved in this issue or is impacted by this issue. They must show up.
Maybe the sixteenth in committee and then the eighteenth back here in council?
Okay. I would support that one week. The concern I have is, we put a lot of pressure on Department of Water and Power about these very security issues after September 11. They come to us, we've approved an ordinance that says, go spend the money, then we send a message when they come back and say, we found a better way to do it, and we might be able to save some money and get better competition. We then say it's not vetted. We voted on this several months ago, I assume, to say, go forward, and so it didn't appear to be a problem with $8 million going out to bid to one company or one vendor and 18 internal.
Yeah.
They've only come to us and said, it's now multiple vendors we want to go to to create competition. To me, it's a bad message to the department to say, in the future, don't think outside the box because we're going to recreate the will on you, but if we can get it back in one week, I would support that continuance, but I would certainly not want to slow down any security elements on our Water and Power system that is in place to move forward on.
And that was my point, because we need to do this quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, and then Ms. Perry.
Yeah, I think it's ironic, we're talking about security and the check that's going to take place, a security check. I don't know if it was already in place or it's now being considered to be put in place, but I emphasize again, I think this needs to go back to committee to be aired out and all those questions be answered, because we're talking a security system. We need to make sure the people that put it in have been checked. Also, we have information technology. There's a number of folks over there that are city employees. We may be able to utilize some of that. I understand Councilmember Lavange is concerned about the transmission lines, et cetera, but that's a whole different group of people, but we have IT people, we have Water and Power folks. I think there's a lot of people available within the city family to complete that function. So again, I would request this go back to committee.
Thank you. If there's no objection, I think we have that before us. There's any objection to
Question, clear clarification from the chair of the committee?
The motion was to send it back to committee. I believe the chair said that that was okay with her, and she looks like she's going to schedule that for the sixteenth.
Okay, you want it just the sixteenth or sooner or whatever, just to coordinate?
The sixteenth is the soonest one, so if there's no objection to that, anybody object? If not, that'll be the order. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
On a separate note?
Yes, Mr. Fujioka?
I sit at this table a lot. I've never felt this floor slipperier. No, really, there's something wrong with this floor.
There's been some extra buffing going on.
Yeah.
Thank you for the
As I slide out.
Point of information. Please do moonwalk or whatever you need to do, Mr. Fujioka. Our next item, please.
Next item is first, item number 20, and that was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Councilmember Hahn, we have item number 20 before us.
Colleagues, I, again, I'm sure you're going to give me unanimous vote on this, but I did want to take the opportunity to highlight, for those who might be listening on Channel 35, particularly my wonderful constituents in San Pedro, this item that we're doing today is we're executing a lease with Fast Lane Transportation in Wilmington for the purpose of operating our green waste molting facility, which was currently at our sanitation site on North Gaffey in San Pedro. And why this is exciting to me is because this is the first step in what I hope will culminate in a San Pedro sports facility, which we're going to build up on the old sanitation lot, but the challenge is to begin to move their operations so that we can have that land to create a sports complex for San Pedro, which began to be a problem a couple years ago when the old site that our Eastview Little League players played on for like 40 years was sold to Target Corporation, which will come in and build a Target in San Pedro, which is a much awaited shopping opportunity for all of us in Target in San Pedro, but it did create a problem by dislocating, you know, a lot of kids who have played at those Eastville Little League fields for a long time, my son being one of them, my nephew being one of them, but it's been generations of kids who played there. So my goal is to ultimately rebuild baseball fields in San Pedro up on our old sanitation site. This is the first step of a puzzle, again, which I hope to complete in about three years, which will be a nice sports complex that will have baseball, maybe some basketball hoops, batting cages, T-ball. So this is the first part, so we're going to relocate the molting facility, and then I'm going to work on relocating the rest of the operations. So I hope I can have your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Our next speaker is Mr. Lavange.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn and Madam Councilwoman of the 50th District. I rise to support anything to do with sports fields. Uh, for the young, uh, boys and girls of this community of all ages, sports is important if it's taught and coached correctly. And, uh, I think it was just real important to transform, uh, the appropriate space to make it available, uh, for the community because it's all about activity. For our good health, uh, both mental and physical in, uh, sports provides that avenue. Uh, and I just would hope you require every young person who's involved with that sports program to have a, a public library card because they can put two or two together and, uh, get great physical fitness on the sports fields, but also great mental fitness in our libraries. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. Labange and Ms. Hahn. Seeing no others, individuals on the queue, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
That item has been approved. Next item.
Item number 33, called special for cards from the public.
Yes, Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number 33 is a fair hearing matter requiring heightened attention to the Speaker at the podium or to the monitors at the council members' desks.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti, you want to speak first or have the public comment cards?
Public.
Okay. If I could ask the following individuals, um, Almira Sales, Amelia, I think, oh, Almira, is there two? Almira and Amelia?
Yeah.
Okay.
You'll be, please, four minutes.
Okay, Mr. He's asking for, uh, why don't you-
I take the time for Almira plus my time. I am Cleo.
Okay. Could you just state your name in the, I'm sorry, in the microphone?
But please, can you give me four minutes?
I'll, I'll look to, uh, Councilmember that district of, okay. Mr., he would like Mr. Garcetti four minutes for taking the two, uh, for Almira, okay. Thank you.
Mr. President and members of the City Council, are you opposed to the proposal of that, of the development? In this case, the, the increased height of the apartment building approved by the City Planning Commission would greatly increase the population density in the area that is already very crowded. All of the buildings on this part of Beverly Boulevard are used for commercial purposes. Many, many Anglo-Americans are deserting the area because it is densely populated and the community is beginning to lack diversity. The building decreases the safety of all motorists by blocking their view and limiting their visibility. The 25-feet step bar should be maintained and enforced. Also, there is no additional street parking for guests. The building height of 50 feet plus the two stories, subterranean parking garages are not consistent with the residential area. There have been no flood and environmental studies done in this area. The location is prone to flood. The Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Department of Housing and Urban Development require that all new construction and all substantial improvement have their lowest floor levels, including the basement, elevated at or above the lowest flood level. Therefore, the construction of the below-grade parking garage is prohibited beneath the residential building as indicated by the Bureau of Federal Disaster Act of 1973. The City of Los Angeles participated in the implementation of this program. If the City do not implement this, this program will lose the federal disaster plan. The existing building has no subterranean parking garage in the neighborhood. The basements are equipped with some palm attached feature and the basements are flooded every year. The planning commissions approved at the request of the developer, they ignored the character of the neighborhood and established law. The outgoing projects of former Mayor Jim Hahn and incoming Mayor Antonio Liragusa involved the construction of schools to ease the overcrowding of existing school in the neighborhood. In our central district neighborhood, schools, children are bused to other schools and thereby district. This problem affect our children grades, especially those who have and getting up early to catch the school to commute for distances. In this reason, why new school are being built in our neighborhood? A project which started during Mayor Hahn's terms and is still continues today. These two mayors want our school classroom to have fewer children so that our teachers can teach them better. Construction of apartment building 50 feet high in the overcrowded neighborhood will worsen the current problems found in our neighborhood overcrowded school. The City can share but not, but cannot tackle all the population problem of the world. Mr. Chairman, adorable President Garcetti, we voted for you also with our neighborhood. Please don't let me down.
Thank you very much. Um, our next speaker, Cleo Sales. That you're, okay. Jim McQuiston? Jim McQuiston? I'm sorry? I can't hear. Okay. Okay, we'll hear from Mr. Quiston and then we will go next to the other speaker.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. I think you all have my statement. I'm not going to go through it. There are two very, very serious civil rights questions that are raised inadvertently, I believe, but they are still civil rights questions. We really don't want the federal judge to put a, uh, an overseer over our planning department. This has been going on for a long, long time in planning and it could happen. We think that this ought to be sent back to the APC with instructions, "Hey, uh, we got to obey the civil rights of a couple of points on here, not a lot." Some of the questions that were raised in the appeal, I certainly wouldn't support, but two of them, I think a federal judge would. And I would urge you to send this back to the APC with a question to, uh, take another look at two of these points at least and clarify the matter on those points. The APC that exists now had no history. The planning department didn't bother to give them the history. Uh, prior APCs have decided otherwise, so you do run into a problem that a federal judge would say, "Hey, everyone has a right to privacy under this law. We have to preserve that right. We can't say people in Hollywood are entitled to privacy and people down in Beverly are
Thank you. I'm sorry, the next speaker, if you could state your name for the record.
My name is Amelia Sales and, uh, I am living at 127 South Hoover Street. As our elected officials of our city, we expect you all to listen and see our neighbors' concern. The lot is for commercial, not residential, so 30-feet-high should be implemented by law. Too much traffic, too crowded schools, that's why you are building schools in our neighborhood to make classrooms smaller in size, to teach the kids better and they will not be bused to other schools in our area. But building high-rise in Commonwealth will not solve the problem of schools that the people, that we, the people elected for. Too high building destroys the beauty, the view, the privacy, and it's flooded area. It cannot be built residential under with subterranean garage for two subterranean garages as allowed by, it's not allowed under June 1993 federal and the city enforce law. Are you not concerned, our, in our neighborhood council members? I guess not, because you don't live in our city, in our area. So we urge all the city elected official member of the council to deny Louis Young Development Company Incorporated that this 50-feet and 10-feet-high building equals 30-feet-high will not be built in, in our area. It should be allowed only for 30-feet-high.
Our last speaker is Zuma Dog. Hold on one second. We, uh, Mr. Sales, you had said you were speaking on behalf of two people. So you had four minutes. Okay, so then that, he's not able to speak at this time. Okay, Mr. Zuma Dog?
Uh, yes, first of all, nobody's seen me without my glasses. Let me remove my glasses for the first time to read this item. And this is item number 33 and it says, uh, this is real problems, categorical exemption and communication for the planning and land use. What it says, "A 50-foot-high structure within 15 feet of the front property line in lieu of the maximum permit of 30 feet." So they want to make it 20 feet higher and guess what? I bet that extra 20 feet's a 20 feet that blocks the view of the constituents, y'all. And then it says other things that they need to do to, in lieu of this and in lieu of that and it should be that, but we're going to make it much bigger. Sounds to me like the campaign contributions from the real estate developers have already been put into play, y'all. And so they need a little fudge factor, right, yeah? Because they can't get the job done and they can't get the cement rolling in and build all the new things they want to build without some of these guidelines being shuffled around a little bit. So hey, that's why you contribute all this expensive campaign money from the real estate developers. So when you need a little help, "Hey, man, I can't get the building, you know, it can only be 30 feet. Well, we got to make it 50 feet." Uh, here's something else here that says, "Permit a second-floor fronting on a major highway to be flush with the first floor." All right, sounds like want to run a highway right through your living room, y'all, and they can't do it without this amendment here. So that's why they donate all those campaign contributions to all the council people from the real estate developers because they're the most powerful people in the city and they run the city. And then they're so powerful, y'all even have to flex to them. And nobody said that I'm out of line yet, y'all. And I'd like to say there's so much more to read on this. If you go to dailynews.com, K A B C dot com, I'll be commenting later on these issues because it's Zuma Dog for City Council. And I just found out you can be homeless and still run for City Council. So that's good news because I'll be hanging out on the corner of Victory and Van Nuys for the last 30 days, so that makes me eligible. And, uh, so please, the citizens alert, y'all. The real estate developers have the campaign contribution money running rampant through the council from everything from the L A. U S D to all the things going on in the city, y'all. And so it must be stopped, Zuma Dog, for L A. City Council. You feel me though?
Thank you. Mr. Sales, since the other gentleman spoke for you on behalf, we'll give you, uh, I guess one, the city attorney's advisor, we should have one minute, so if you'd like to go forward.
My name is, okay, going direct to the point, Madam Chairman. The main issue is the, uh, the, the height limit. The, um, applicant here has no objection apparently about the misuse policy that you have been advocating. But to allow the applicant to build a 50-feet-high would increase the traffic, create congestion in the area. They believe that exoterranean parking will solve it? No. Because it has been proven that every time it rains, the subterranean parking in the neighborhood are flooded. So naturally-
Thank you very much for, for being here. Appreciate it. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Reyes, um, at this time.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, this is one of those items that we reviewed as a committee of one, but we did go through the process of discussing the merits of, of this project and the request for an exception. It became, became very clear to, to myself that this particular exception made sense because of its location in terms of the Vermont Western Trans-Oriented District specific plan. Uh, it allowed for the notion of compatibility. Most of the structures are within that height range. Uh, we do have the massing of the apartments are consistent with the character that's being proposed here. And as such, given the hard work of the council deputy and their advocacy for their position, given these issues of consistency, we felt it was important to essentially follow the recommendation of the commission and deny the appeal filed by Cleo Sales, um, and support the entire determination of the Central Area Planning Commission. So that was the action taken by the committee and I ask for an eye vote.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I want to thank the members of the public that were here and my friends who have testified here today, um, who have been a part of looking at this. I want to thank the, the committee and the recommendations. Um, I know the area very well. Um, I don't live very far away and I walk on the weekends the district and I have many friends who live within three blocks of this area. And one of the things that we've kind of said together on this council, and one of the things when I go door-to-door in this neighborhood and I talk to folks is they say, you know, the, in an area where nothing new has been built, some of the areas, it's, there's no parking and there's, um, and the traffic is high. Now, we often think, okay, the best thing then to do is to keep anything away. And we've certainly tried that thesis here in Los Angeles of no growth or slow growth to say, somehow if we can keep the building out of our neighborhood, the traffic won't get worse and the parking will get better. But that's not the case because what happens is in the existing infrastructure with no new parking built, with no new apartments, everybody crams into that existing infrastructure. So right in the neighborhood that you speak about, and I, I know you know this very well too, you have single homes that used to be for single families where there's three families living. You have old apartment buildings with no trap, with no parking and people put their cars on the street. What has happened is something remarkable. There's a shifting in the city where people realize that something that actually would take the people who are in that neighborhood anyway and allow them to have a place, A, to park, that would take, um, cars off the street and B, would allow people to actually have a place to live where they're not cramming together, is something worth trying. And it's worth trying, especially on our transit corridors. And by definition, this is the meeting of two main transit corridors. So when you look at this, of all places, it's in the scale of the area, but also it helps preserve the lower-scale stuff that's off the main street. So I want to tell, tell my friends that, that it's precisely when we build on our main streets like Beverly or on Temple or on Sunset Boulevard, or if we build on our main streets like Wilshire, it allows us to preserve off of the main street right there, those lower-density homes. And that is precisely why we should do that because our own children, not even migrants or immigrants, but our own children is going, will account for two-thirds of the growth that we'll experience here in the next 15 years. And that's expected to be the equivalent of about 4 million people. So we have two choices. We either plan for that growth and do something like what we have before us today, preserve our lower-density places off-street, provide new parking, provide new apartments, or we don't plan for it. And things get worse because everybody crams into the existing old infrastructure. I wish there was a third option, that somehow in some places we could say, "No," and it would actually improve. But we've seen consistently for 30 years, it gets worse each year when we don't build the new parking, yes, subterranean. And I will be working very closely to make sure that any of the flooding issues, this is a wonderful gateway to historic Filipino town. I'd like to work with this developer to actually do something that either architecturally or signage signals that because of that historic accomplishment and we've worked together on that. Um, and the diversity of the neighborhood is something that is very important. I know you wrote here that many Anglo-Americans were deserting this area because it's densely populated and the community is beginning to lack diversity. I love the diversity that is a part of this neighborhood. It is a place where you can go and you can find people from Korea, living next to people from the Philippines, living next to people from Guatemala, living next to people from El Salvador. You can find African-Americans that have lived there for three or four generations. Um, and you can find Anglo-Americans as well. But the importance here is good planning and to make sure that we have high-quality housing like this that is built, that actually takes the cars off the street and allows us to have places for our own children, grandchildren to live. With that, I'll be working closely and keeping careful eye. We appreciate the things that were brought forward, but I do support Plum's, um, recommendation here today and I ask you to do the same thing as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Any other questions? If not- If not, Madam Clerk, open the roll in the Plum report, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
Item number 41, call special for cards from the public.
Zuma Dog and Michael Hunt.
Yes, good evening and good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Zuma Dog, I'll be running for LA City Council. I just went by the city clerk's office, and here's my general information. Right now, I'd like to be commenting on agenda item number 41. That is from Zion and Smith, who I'd like to commend what this does. I'd like to catch everybody's attention. I complain about bad things enough. Here's something people might not know, this must pass, please unanimously, it's to prepare and present an ordinance to provide that all full-time city employees who are activated by the Armed Services of the United States for Border Security and Operations receive the difference between, excuse me, I'm having a tough time hearing myself during public comment right now. It says that the city employees who are activated by the Armed Services of the United States for Border Security Operations receive the difference between their current city salaries and their military salaries and continuation of city medical, dental, life insurance program benefits for the duration of their military assignment. So basically what this means is, yeah, yeah, we got lots of border control problems, it looks like we're gonna have to start taking city employees from the city and help patrol the border with them. So I'd like to commend council members Zion and Smith for putting this through. Please vote unanimously, because if that's being done this way, they will still be able to support their families and get the pay they're supposed to instead of a cheap way of just trying to get federal work at city prices. Thank you, Zuma Dog, for LA City Council. Please vote yes, and thank you very much.
Mr. Hunt.
Thank you again. Welcome to Channel 35, The Outlaws. Matt D'Zioli couldn't be here today, but Zuma Dog is here with me. And big ups to you, Zion, again. I think you're doing some good things. I believe in equal pay for equal work, too. No matter what the task is, I think that you're doing a good job setting forth a good trend here in city council, so that your employees still get paid no matter what, whether they help the United States or whether they are on their regular jobs, and you keep the bill and issue at hand. I think that's a great, great deed for the city of Los Angeles, and I just hope you keep up the work, good, good work, Zion, and keep setting the standards instead of just meeting them.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Zion, followed by Mr. Reyes.
Thank you for those wonderful comments. I, I'm sincere, really. We have some representatives here from the police department, I don't know if we really need to go into it. Basically, what this does is provide the salary, the compensation package equal when people are in the National Guard and they're called up for active duty. Doesn't matter what the mission is, they have to respond, they have to comply, and all this is doing is making sure that their compensation package remains the same. We do that for people who are shipped over to Iraq, we make that when people are shipped to New Orleans from National Guard. We just want to make sure that the officers and their families don't lose any compensation. Again, they're following orders from their assignment with the National Guard, so I don't know how we can deprive them of that. They don't have the discretion of where they're assigned, they follow orders, and we're just gonna make sure they get compensated while they're carrying out the mission in their National Guard capacity. So, request an eye vote. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Colleagues, I need to speak up on this issue for one simple reason. One is I do support this motion because of what it does to the individual, who's going to have to sacrifice themselves over a policy that if we had the ability to keep our $33 million a block grant in our own city, if we had the ability to invest in our infrastructure in a way in which we had stronger relations with our international community, where people did not have to migrate to this country, if we were able to question and look at alternative policies that this federal government has chosen to ignore by sending our hard-earned tax dollars to war that everyone is questioning, to the young men who are dying, men and women who are dying, this measure would not be necessary. So I just thought it'd be important to, for me to exercise my freedom of speech and let the public know that, yes, we are supporting our individual city family members, but on my part, as an individual, I don't support what the federal government is doing to our country in tearing out all those needed tax dollars for our social services, for our needs in our community, and their inability to have enough foresight to invest in our international economy where we could prevent this kind of migration that is impacting our economy. That's all I need to say.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I support this. I actually was the one that introduced the motion during the Iraq war, to make sure that all of our city employees who were in active duty there received the compensation difference between their, their military pay and their city pay. So I certainly support this. I know previous city councils have been reluctant to do sort of a catch-all ordinance, but maybe that's something we want to do in the city charter, is some, someday make one ordinance that just, you know, codifies this, that no matter what war you're involved in, what military assignment that you get, that the city of Los Angeles believes that if you're a city employee and you're called up for active duty in the military, that we believe your family should not suffer, and your compensation and your health benefits and everything should remain the same. So maybe someday, we want to do one ordinance that really takes care of this once and for all, instead of every time there's a new military assignment, every time there's, you know, a new war, we have to go through this again. I would be in favor of that. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Zion.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Hahn. I, I agree with that. Mr. Miller, if you can answer the question, I think we've tried to do this in the past, is to have a blanket anytime they're activated, and whatever regulation or rule doesn't permit, which we keep on going, every time another matter comes up, we go for another ordinance. We may have to do some research on that, but I've looked into that before, and somehow it wasn't permitted due to the rules. I don't know what rule we need to change. So it would be a blanket, wherever you get deployed, whatever you get deployed for, you follow military orders, you're a city employee with your department of transportation or whatever department, because we got firefighters and police officers and engineers, a whole number of folks in the city family that get deployed that are in the National Guard. But I've, I've looked into that. Can you give us an explanation of what we need to do to give the blanket authority? Well, we should have done the charter. Let's go rewrite the, let's rewrite the charter, Januson. That was two years. You want to do that again?
Why didn't you think of that?
Jerry?
That certainly is one way you could go, but I do know that it's been discussed, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to check with, with city attorney and find out. I believe that there was an instruction at some point to draft an ordinance that would provide a broader, more blanket protection.
Why don't you look into that, and then we can get back to, Ms. Hahn and I can work with you on that, and whatever we need to do, if we can make that happen. Because the next issue that comes up, I knew we had to do something, folks that got deployed for Katrina, New Orleans, we had some Department of, City Engineers that were deployed, and fire, et cetera. So I mean, we keep on coming back to the table, which we want to make sure our employees and their families are compensated. It doesn't give them a bonus, all it does is maintain that salary that they're currently receiving, the balance between the military salary and the city salary, and keep the medical benefits going.
Right.
So why don't you look into that and see what we can do to try and put an umbrella on it for time, so we don't have to keep on going back to the table.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anyway, eye vote, and away we go.
Thank you, Mr. Zion. If I could open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
Item number 42, call special for, from cards from the public.
Samuel Sanchez. Mr. Sanchez? If not, a public comment is closed. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item?
Item 43, call special for cards from the public.
Yes, Zuma Dog and Michael Hunt.
Good morning, City Council. My name's Zuma Dog, I'm running for Los Angeles City Council. I'm homeless and will be the first homeless City Council candidate, because I just found out, thanks to the helpful information at the city clerk's office, you could be homeless and run for City Council, which is good, because that's a huge portion of Los Angeles' constituency. So let's see, what's the next item up for bid on the City Council's Price is Right? It is item number 43, relative. Okay, what this does is it puts the order and lettering for the new three ballot measures to be placed November 7th on the California general election. So basically, there's three measures, and this puts the wording and the order. And here's why this is comedy. Everyone knows I'm a comedian, all I got to do is read this ordinance, it's so funny. The first measure, they put the Affordable Housing General Obligation Bonds. Okay, of course, yes, put that, everyone wants, yes. Second measure, city of Los Angeles Technical Change for the Regional Fire Stations. Hell, yeah, you want to approve the fire stations, everybody votes yes. Now you're used to just seeing, okay, yes, yes. Third measure, term limits extensions, of course, they put a third and last, hoping people just vote yes, because they already voted yes twice already. And it says ethics law, so you think, well, that's good, because what you did is you attached the ethics portion to the part of your own term limits extension. Oh, no! By the way, Rocky Delgado, the city attorney, said you're opening up for your civil lawsuits because they shouldn't be commingled together, they should be two separate items, and how come you got to put ethics attached to your own term limits extensions, especially when you only put them for yourselves and not for the mayor, comptroller, or city attorney? It's rampant corruption. And so, it's also the most important issue, everybody's talking about, how come you bury it at the bottom? I say, please put an amendment to this thing you're about to vote on that says, put the term limits on two separate ballot initiatives, because the city attorney warned you that that's a civil violation, and you know you're already so used to running rampant on federal law, y'all. So please, just, we got to suspend this and put it back some other time for more public comment, which I'll be commenting today on 790 KABC, Zuma Dog.
Our next speaker is Michael Hunt.
That right there is a hard act to follow, but anyways, I, I too agree, I think the first two are really great, and then the third one, I think it should be separate, broken up in separate categories, so that the people can vote on it in different sections. And that's all, I want to say what's up to Matt D'Zioli, The Outlaws, this is official Outlaw stations. Thank you, Michael Hunt.
He should have kept talking.
Thank you. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
That item's now been approved. Next order?
Next item, Madam President. There is a special one motion that has been distributed to the council members presented by Council, Councilmember Weiss, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the California Office of Homeland Security notified the city of Los Angeles of a reinterpretation of the Urban Area Security Initiative Program application process. Immediate action is required to adopt the resolution before August 8th. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substance of motion.
Thank you. Any comments on the findings? Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
The item is now before us. No comments? Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
That item's been approved. Next order?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
The excuses on the desk, Councilmember Westen requests to be excused August 11th until 11:30 for city business, a motion is required.
Mr. Weiss moves, Mr. Smith seconds. Mr. Weiss, you had a comment?
Just go forthwith on that special item, please.
Forthwith on the special.
Councilmember Pedy requests to be excused Friday, September 22nd for personal business that meets council policy.
He'll be excused.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused September 26th and 27th for city business that meets council policy.
She'll be excused.
And Councilmember Rice requests to be excused Friday, November 3rd for personal business that meets council policy.
Be excused.
And that clears the desk, Madam President.
Thank you. Colleagues, we have any announcements today? Any announcements? Mr. Rose, no? Okay, no announcements? Do we have adjourned motions? Yes, if I could ask everyone to please rise. Thank you. If I could acknowledge Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Mark Allen Lee, who some of you may have written, read about yesterday in the Los Angeles Times, the first Navy SEAL to be killed during the war in Iraq. He was killed last week, he's 28-years-old and was a second-class petty officer in the United States Navy, was killed in a prolonged firefight with insurgents in Ramadi. As many of you know, the SEALs pride themselves on being one of the most elite defenders of this country, and they certainly are among the best-trained, best-in-shape human beings probably on the face of the earth, and a group of individuals that are very tight with one another. And I was just down in San Diego this weekend, and it was certainly something that the entire Navy organization, as well as, I'm sure this country feels very strongly, but certainly down in San Diego, as the first SEAL to fall in the war in Iraq, it was something that they all felt very strongly. He was married to his wife Maya Lee, of 25. They were two people who were clearly in love. He was planning for the future, he said, she said, for October. And in an email to his wife earlier this summer, Lee mentioned going into an Iraqi house on a mission and seeing children there, and wrote, quote, "The youngest girl was a glimpse into the future of our own daughter, really cute, curly hair, small and petite. It made me want a family so bad with you. Once again, I am in a rush to write this, as I'm rolling out of here in less than an hour. No worries about anything, I am fine." His mother, Debbie Lee, also said that in his mother's eyes, he will always be a hero and greatly missed, and I know that the SEAL Command, including Rear Admiral Joe McGuire, who's the commander, out of the SEAL unit in San Diego, issued a statement praising Lee and two other SEALs who were wounded in the same operation. He was awarded one of the highest commendations now, obviously, after he has passed away, a posthumous award of the Bronze Star Medal for Valor, and a combat action ribbon, and a Purple Heart. Lee grew up in Hood River, Oregon, he excelled in soccer and enjoyed skiing and weightlifting. His brother, Chris, served in the Marine Corps. He enlisted in 2001 and began the 25-week boopers training, which is the most extensive training, has a failure rate of almost 80%. He got pneumonia in the midst of it because it is that demanding, but after a year being assigned to a ship, he went back and became a SEAL, his lifelong dream. May he rest in peace, and may all of us remind ourselves of the men and women who are sacrificing themselves right now for us in Iraq. Thank you.
All members. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Madam President. Another real tragedy touching the San Pedro community. The sister and brother-in-law of Stacy Jones, and some of you may remember Stacy Jones, she was the, sort of the second-in-command at the Port of Los Angeles until she just recently retired. Her father, Stan Jones, we honored him down here as the longest-serving firefighter in the country. So it was his daughter and Stacy's sister and brother-in-law were killed tragically in a car accident last week. Their three children, Nicholas, Cullen, Albert, age eight, five, and three, were in the car at the time, but survived. So they survived the car accident, but both their parents are dead. So it's really quite a tragedy. So Melanie and Casey Barber were their names, and I'd like us to adjourn our meeting in their memory. Melanie was 40, so was Casey. He was raised in Pacific Beach and was a member of the Set Builders Union in San Diego for 20 years. She, also 40, was raised in San Pedro. They had a large family, if you remember Stan Jones, they had like 13 children. She graduated from Mary Starr High School, and she received a basketball scholarship to the University of California at Riverside. Apparently, they both met at Mammoth, they were love at first sight, they seemed like the perfect couple, they enjoyed activities with their church, they took their kids hiking, fishing, swimming, they both were surfers, they really were an ideal family that really got involved, again, in their church and their community. Everyone that knew them just said they were the friends that you could always count on. So it is a real tragedy, and we really want to keep their kids in our thoughts and prayers, as well as the entire family. There's going to be a lot of adjustments for those three kids as they grow up. So they're survived by their three sons, Nicholas, Cullen, and Albert, their parents, Ralph and Nancy Barber, and Stan, and Betty Jones, their brothers and sisters, including my friend and colleague Stacy Jones.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Adjourned motions. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Mako, who was, who in 1965 co-founded the East-West Players, the nation's first Asian-American theater company. He died of cancer at his home in Ventura County at the age of 72, and he is revered as the godfather of Asian-American theater. He was born Makoto Iwamatsu in Kobe, Japan, on December 10th He was born Makoto Iwamatsu in Kobe, Japan, on December tenth, nineteen thirty-three. When he was five years old, his parents left Japan to study art in New York, and he stayed behind and was raised by his grandparents. In the early days of his acting career, when most roles offered, most roles regarding Asian-Americans or Asians were offered to Caucasians or were caricatures, Mako took a part and used it to open the doors of Hollywood and Broadway to others. In the nineteen sixty-six film Sand Pebbles, he played a Chinese character named Pohan, who spoke pidgin English, and this was a groundbreaking role, which earned him an Academy Award nomination. And he used that nomination to continue his push for better and more roles for Asian-American actors. He also used his nomination to address the dearth of parts for Asian-American actors in general. As artistic director of East-West Players, he trained generations of actors and playwrights, staged classics such as Shakespeare's Twelfth Night, Chekhov's Three Sisters, and other contemporary works as well. In the month before his death, he was preparing to appear with his wife in an East-West production of the comedy Monty Chan, the story of an older Nisei couple hoping to nudge their forty-something son out of their house and into his own life. After he became seriously ill, the company decided to cancel rather than recast the play as a nod of respect to Mako and his legacy. He is survived by his wife, Shizuko Hoshi, and their daughters Sala and Mimosa. And I just have two others, Madam Chair. If... Zelvin Reyes is an individual who was fatally shot on July the twenty-second, and while he was shot to death in Highland Park, he was a resident of the ninth, and so the council member for that area may want to sign on this with me. He was, thank you, Mr. Reyes, he was seventeen years old and heading off to college. Born in Guatemala, raised in South Los Angeles, he was the very first person in his family to graduate from high school. He had a partial scholarship to Westwood College in the Mid-Wilshire District, where he planned to major in computer science. He attended Lincoln High School and played wide receiver for the football team. He was described as the coolest person, and never had any trouble with anyone. He was just trying to help out a friend. He was considered to be popular, lively, and had a great sense of humor, and I know that we will join his family in mourning their loss. And finally, I want to adjourn in memory of Jeanne Clinton Reuschlau, who was found deceased in her condominium near downtown. She was eighty-three years old, and the reason I wanted to honor her is because her parents founded Clifton's Cafeteria in downtown Los Angeles in nineteen thirty-one during the Depression. Customers were guests, no one was turned away, even if they had no money. During one ninety-day period, ten thousand people ate for free before Clifford Clinton could even open an emergency penny cafeteria a few blocks away to feed just for pennies to two million people who came over the next few years. At its height, there were seven Clifton's with restaurants all over the city, but increasing rent and leases closed all but one, which remained at six forty-eight South Broadway in downtown Los Angeles, and I am sure we will never forget her.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Madam President. Shirley Louise Klein Harris, better known as Shirley Harris, just died on August the second from complications of multiple sclerosis. She was born in Rockford, Illinois, on August seventeenth, nineteen twenty-four. She moved from Minneapolis as a young woman, and later moved to Los Angeles with her husband, Bert, in nineteen forty-nine. Although suffering from MS for close to forty years, she lived her life to the fullest and loved every aspect of it. She had many passions, which included cooking, art, music, literature, and tending to her orchids and roses. Most of all, she adored traveling all over the world for many years with her husband, Bert, who preceded her in death in two thousand and four. They were married sixty years ago. The funeral was held yesterday. She was loved by everybody. She always had a big grin and a big smile on, extremely generous to all kinds of people, to family and friends, and she'll be surely missed.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, we're joined today by the colleague of an individual who passed away over the weekend. We're joined by Marty Berg, the editor of the Los Angeles Daily Journal. The Daily Journal and the L.A. journalism community over the weekend lost a really wonderful man named Gary Abrams, who, for many years, was the columnist for the Daily Journal. If you ever looked at the legal newspaper, you would see Gary's face in his column on the front page a couple times a week. He was a wonderful person, and he could tell stories about L.A. legal folks, and also just about journalism, because he had a long career as a journalist, including about a dozen years at the L.A. Times. But he sort of invented this genre of writing these columns at the Daily Journal, which really, you know, added a lot of life and vitality to the paper, and which, you know, made him instantly one of the most popular and recognizable figures in the L.A. legal community. He was suffering from prostate cancer for eight years, but he held on long enough to see his daughter celebrate her eighteenth birthday, and then he died very shortly thereafter. He's survived by his wife, his daughter, his sister, his mother, his brother, and he's someone whom everybody in the law and in journalism in Los Angeles knew of, greatly respected, and will greatly miss.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Zion.
Request we adjourn in memory of Gwen Chavez, forty years of age. Gwen, wife of Louis Chavez, Detective Support and Vice Divisional San Francisco Police Department. Gwen and her husband were en route to Sturgis for the annual motorcycle rally in Fillmore, Utah. The rear tire of his motorcycle blew, resulting in a crash. Ms. Chavez was killed at the scene. Detective Chavez was transported to local hospital, where he is recovering from his injuries. They have three children, Christina, twenty-six, Victor, twenty-one, and Darren, fifteen. May Gwen Chavez rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Zion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This meeting's adjourned.